I'll call to order the Westmoreland City Council meeting for January 21, 2021. This will be at a hybrid meeting under Executive-
I'll call to order the Westmoreland City Council meeting, 21st, 2021.
I can't hear you, Mayor. Or see you.
Are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Don't see you, but I-
Okay.
Turn your video on.
Then you're just gonna look at me. You're not gonna see everybody. Okay.
Well, I don't know who everybody is. I'm not sure how this is supposed to work, but we do need to see the mayor. He's presiding over the- there you go. I guess I might have to sit with you. I don't know. The only way you can do a hybrid is if everybody's got a screen and a microphone, or a big screen in the whole room. But anyway, go ahead. We can see it down there. We can see it at a distance. This might work.
Okay. We have enough people for a quorum. We'll go ahead and let Ms. Keisha call for roll for us.
Felicia Head?
Present.
Brian Smalling?
Here.
Jerry Kirkman?
Here.
Jender Wilkerson?
Here.
David Lee?
Here.
Doug Brown?
Here.
We have three members present in the room. Ms. Keisha is here, and the mayor is here. John Bradley, and Doug Brown, and David Lee are all calling in on Zoom contact. We are gonna try this and see how it works tonight. If it doesn't work, then we will decide how to move forward at that point. Executive Order 71 says that if the council determines that we need to meet for the safety of the public, then we can do that, or we can still have in-house meetings. So, we're trying the hybrid version, which is kind of what the school system has been using, and we'll give that a shot. If you would bow with me for just a moment of prayer. Father in heaven, we ask for your direction tonight as we move into this meeting. We thank you for your grace and your mercy, as it has been spread all over Westmoreland, and we ask you, dear Lord, that you continue to keep your hands upon us and guide us. Lord, we have a new president and a lot of new members in Congress. Father, we ask you to direct them and be with them. Father, ones that are sick and afflicted with this dreaded disease of COVID-19, Lord, we pray that the numbers are headed down as the vaccinations are beginning and it is starting to unfold in our area, we just put it in your hands. We ask it all in your graceful name, Jesus, your son. Amen.
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 If you would stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is to adopt the agenda. We have an agenda before everyone. Does everyone participating in Zoom have an agenda with them?
Yes.
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 Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I'm going to accept the adopt of the agenda.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion by Ms. Wilkerson, a second by Mr. Smalling, to adopt the agenda as is. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Is there anyone that's in the room that represents the public that would like to speak to anything on the agenda? Okay. Hearing none. First item is the minutes from the November 19, 2020 meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve those minutes.
Have a motion by Councilman Lee, a second by Councilman Brown, to accept the minutes of the November 19 meeting. Is very any discussion? Hearing none. With everyone in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the minutes from the January 7, 2021 special calls meeting.
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes for January 7 special calls meeting.
My second.
Have a motion by Councilman Smalling, a second by Councilwoman Wilkerson.
Travis Stafford.
Join the meeting.
Is very any discussion? Hearing none. Everyone in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Mr. Smalling, if you would pass these over to Ms. Keisha. There are three copies there that are signed to the minutes that you just passed. There's a copy there to send to each bank. The next item on the agenda is the November 2020 financial statement.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the November 2020 financial statement.
Have a motion by Councilman Brown, a second by Councilman Lee, to accept the November 2020 financial statement. Is very any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously. The next item is the December 2020 financial statement.
I'll make the motion to approve the December 2020 financial statement.
Have a motion by Councilman Smalling, a second by Councilwoman Wilkerson, to accept the December 2020 financial statement. We're open for discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I've got a couple, three questions about this one, if you don't mind.
Okay. Go right ahead.
If you look, in the general fund, there's a line item 3600, I believe it is, or 36000, miscellaneous receipts. I'm just curious what that $5,632, ten cents, what is that?
Okay. Which fund are you in, Councilman Lee?
Amendment receipts for revenue. The general receipt fund, first page. Line item 36000.
Okay. I'll direct that to Ms. Keisha. She may not have the exact answer for you tonight, but it may be something that we have to get for you.
I was just curious, because the other two months are low numbers, and I'm just curious what that $5,600 was.
I do not remember off the top of my head, but I will look into that in the morning and email everyone and let you all know what that was for.
Okay. And I've got another question here. In the sanitation department, line item 330, fuel expense, and this may just be a coding error here. For the month of December, there's zero there, and then in the water department, same line item, it looks like it's doubled. So it may be a key error there. Or coding error.
Okay. Yeah, possibly so, because I mean, there should be some fuel expenses for sure. So I'll check on that one as well.
Okay. My last concern about it is the Verizon lease. I don't see where- are we getting any money from Verizon lately?
Okay. I'll speak to that. We are not receiving any funds from them as of yet, because the contract has still not been signed with them for the completion of the installation. Our contract that we signed for construction states in it that funds will not start until that tower goes live and is fully tested. Verizon has been contacted about it, because it was my understanding that it went live in the fall, and what we found out was the- is it- which form was it, Keisha? When we changed over our charter from a town to a city, something didn't get changed along the way, and they got the paperwork from the town or the city. Anyway, it wasn't correct. So they're having to redo that paperwork, and Keisha sent it to them, what, three weeks ago?
Something like that.
Two to three weeks ago, and they are working on that now. If we are due back payment, they will make that retroactive to us.
Okay. Okay.
That is why I always said not to put it in the budget, to count it as funds until we actually start receiving funds, because if that had been the case, we would have had a surplus, and when it starts coming in, we're going to be in the hole with it now.
That's a pretty interesting excuse for not paying us. I've never heard anyone like that. We approved that contract, and I'm pretty sure it said city.
Something about the, I don't know if it's a W-9 or what it was.
Yeah, it was like our tax ID wasn't matching up. It still says town.
Evidently, our tax ID changed when we became a city.
That's just an amended tax ID with the IRS. That's easy to fix.
We're working on it.
Mayor, before you vote on this, remember too, all these votes have to be roll call.
We haven't been doing roll call in the past, John.
Every Zoom meeting, by the executive order of the governor, says roll call vote for a Zoom meeting.
Okay. We haven't been doing that in the past. We started out doing that, and then we got away from it for some reason, so if we need to go back to that, we will.
You've met in person about three times, so that would sort of make you forget it. But it's still, as long as this is partly Zoom, it has to be a roll call vote.
Okay. We've met Zoom meetings yesterday, all through, the mayors and county officials through Nashville and the state, and they did not do roll calls. So is there a limit on it, if you have more than five people on the Zoom, but you don't do roll?
No, it has nothing- I don't know what kind of a meeting you had yesterday, but it was not a governing body of a city or a county, and that's what the rules apply to.
Okay.
It wouldn't apply to an RTA meeting or something like that. I'm not sure what your meeting was, but it applies to all city council meetings and all county commission meetings. Roll call votes as long as part of it's by Zoom.
Okay. We can go back if we need to and do roll call votes from the minutes forwards.
I think that you can just go forward. Everyone acknowledges that there were all unanimous votes in the affirmative, so there's no reason to go back. I'm just saying that when we get to the ordinances and resolutions, it's very important that there be a roll call vote.
Any other discussion about the financial statement for December of 2020? Ms. Keisha?
Lee?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Head?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Let the record show that the motion passes unanimously. Is everyone okay with the previous votes before we move forward?
Yes.
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 Okay. Thank you. We move now to old business, and the first item there is the second reading of ordinance 012020-2 to eliminate dumpster pickup.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table this until we have time to review the financial information with the rest of the garbage information that we'll be reviewing.
Okay. We have a motion to table the second reading until the study can be done on the finances. Is very second. Ms. Keisha, if you'll call for roll.
Lee?
I didn't hear a second.
Change your second in. Brown?
Yes.
Head?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
And I didn't hear a call for discussion. Is there discussion for that?
There's no discussion when it's tabled. Do you wish to vote, Councilman Lee?
Yes. No.
Okay. Councilman Lee votes no. Everyone else votes yes, so the ordinance 0112-2020-2 is tabled to the work study. We move now to new business. The first item is Resolution 012021-2. It's the 2021 meeting dates.
Make the motion to approve that resolution.
Where do we discuss this?
Need to get a second.
Okay. Sorry. I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second now. We're open for discussion.
I see a December meeting up here, but I don't see a December meeting.
What we have in this particular resolution, the first set of columns is for the city council. The second column is for the planning and zoning commission, and the third one is for the board of appeals.
Yeah, those are- the board of appeals and then the planning of that.
They're all the same, basically the same, but board of appeals and planning and zoning meet on the same day. But also, if there is no- nothing on the agenda, then at that point, there is no meeting. So, but the council meetings are pretty much set in stone. As discussed at the work study, we added the December meeting back in this year, but if there's nothing to be discussed or nothing for an agenda, then the December meeting for the city council will be canceled.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Ms. Keisha, you'll call for roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Head?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously. Next item is Resolution R. 012021-3. It is an amendment or an update to our purchasing policy, which allows for change for department heads to go from signing, needing the mayor's approval from $200 to $500 for the purchase order request. We're open for a motion.
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion to pass the Resolution R. 012021-3.
We have a motion by Councilman Lee, a second by Councilman Brown, to update the purchasing policy by Resolution R. 012021-3. We are open for discussion.
May I talk about the other requirements and the purchase policy around this particular
I'm not sure exactly what you're asking, but right now, if a purchase is going to be made, not a repair or something like that, that's already been voted on and is in the budget, but if you wanted to purchase something, if it's over $200 or over, with the current policy, the mayor has to sign off on it as a purchasing agent from the city. What this will do, it will raise the limit where department heads have up to $500 before they have to bring it, before the mayor for an okay. It puts a lot more responsibility on the department head to keep up with their purchases and do that as far as keeping up with their statement and knowing how much they spend and what's outstanding.
Is that for budgeted funds or unbudgeted funds?
It's for budgeted funds.
Okay. So they still have to ask permission from the council to get an unbudgeted item?
Unbudgeted items, unless they have a line item in their budget, should come to the council, yes.
What about if they're already over budget, and they write something for $500, and they don't have the money?
At that time, it's up to City Hall to say that there's no money in the budget, and you don't have the spend.
That department head will be held accountable for that. This, and you can't hardly buy anything for $200 anymore, the way prices have gone up. And I think this current limit was set years ago, and I don't see that it's causing any more responsibility for the department heads. It's taking a load off of you, Mr. Mayor, for every time they need something that's over $250.
What I'm going to require, if this does pass, is that each department head come in each week at City Hall and not only review their invoices, I think they actually sign off on all the invoices now when they're brought into the clerk. I am going to make it a requirement that the department head code where they want that invoice paid out of their budget. That way, they are able to look at their financial statement, have a firm grip on where they stand with it at that time, and know exactly how much money they're spending or not spending. So.
I think our department is, I feel like they are anyway, are keeping an eye on their budget.
That's what their task to do. Any other comments, questions? Ms. Keisha is a financial officer for the city. Would you like to comment on it?
I like your idea of having them to put where they want it, what line item they want it to come out of. A lot of times in the water and sewer, we get kind of confused if it's for the lines, if it's for the plant, if it's, and a lot of times, we do code that incorrectly. So that's going to help us out a lot as well.
Yeah. At this point, if the supervisor doesn't code the invoice for the clerk, a lot of times it is a guess where that money's going. And that could help cut out on confusion of a lot of things, just like what you had with sanitation a while ago. If we get the invoice in for fuel and the supervisor signs off and codes where it comes from, then it takes the requirement of the clerk trying to sometimes guess where it's coming from. And a lot of those items, if they don't have a line, it goes into miscellaneous, and then that becomes a point where they need to get with Ms. Trout and have a line add it to it so that we can identify where that money's going. So I think that's a good move, whether you actually pass this or not, but it needs to be enacted. Anything else? Ms. Keisha, if you'll call for roll, please.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Smalling?
No.
Brown?
Yes.
Head?
No.
Lee?
The motion carries three to two, with Smalling and Head voting no. Next item on the agenda is the Hessen surety for the fire hydrant on Pleasant Grove Road. We discussed this some at the work study, planning and zoning has been involved in this somewhat. Our public work supervisor was supposed to come up with a quote for us to do that, so we'll get a motion in a second and then move ahead.
I'll make the motion that we do a surety grant for the Hessen property of Pleasant
We have a motion by Councilman Smalling. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Councilman Brown. We are open for discussion.
Do we have that information that we're going to be required to vote on as part of that?
Were you able to come up with any numbers?
When?
Do we have some numbers?
Hold on, I'm looking.
Okay. I don't know how my name got put beside that, but that wasn't my, that was Brian's idea there, I think.
Yeah, I, I saw that. I didn't know if you had more information.
A lot of times when we're just discussing this, the work study, whoever says add it to the agenda, it gets put in there sometimes.
And Brian, while she's looking for that, there's, there's a lot of times I can't, I don't know about Doug, but I can't hear you.
That microphone a little better.
That's better on my end.
Okay.
Okay, so Erin got an estimate from Kemp Brothers, um, six by six hot tap with five and a quarter hydrant assembly, and the price on that was $8,200.
I want to amend my motion to say that for that price with an additional 5% for inflation for the time that might be necessary for the city to put it in if they don't.
So who's paying for this?
They'll put the money in.
And if they don't, we're responsible, the city? And where will we take that money from?
No, no, they, the money will come from the state.
They're putting the money aside.
Okay, so we're not out any money?
It's like a letter of credit.
Okay.
They're promising that they'll pay that.
Yeah.
Whether they put it in or not, they have to pay that money.
Do they have a time?
It's basically a lien on their property otherwise.
Okay, I was going to say, is there a time period that they reimburse?
They get signed off as completed through our process, and if it's not completed, we can take action to take the money and do what we need to.
What was the answer, what was the answer to Fleischer's question?
You guys pick up.
Read the question.
I said, um, if they didn't pay it, was the city out the money? And then the answer was that the city's not out the money, they, if we had to pay it as the city, they would have to reimburse us. And then I asked, if we have to pay it, how long does it take for them? Is there a time period for them to reimburse the, the money back to the city? And then?
Yeah.
Answer was?
That going through our process, if they don't get, they completed, we have the right to enact.
Put a lien on their property.
Basically.
Okay. Thank you.
It's a more detailed answer than that, but that's in short form.
That's true.
I'd like to know if that's a one year or two year or, you know, what's project life is on it. Other questions? Ms. Keesha?
Head?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Smalling?
Let the record show, the vote is unanimous on the motion. And just for the record, that was, uh, $8,200 plus a 5% to cover inflation if it runs, if it's needed. Next item is the beer permit for Easy Cheesy Pizza Travis Stafford. Uh, we discussed this at the work study, and you have received the, uh, background check from the TBI. So we're open for motion.
I'll make the motion to pass the beer permit for Easy Cheesy Pizza Travis Stafford.
We have a motion by Councilman Lee. He is very second. Councilman Brown makes the second. We are open for discussion.
Is, um, Mr. Stafford with us?
He is.
Would he like to speak?
Um, Travis, if you would like to say something, you can unmute yourself and talk.
I'm pretty good on comments. I mean, y'all covered everything pretty well. Um, I just want to say thank you for, you know, doing all this.
Mr. Stafford, I have a question.
Are, are, you're the manager, or do you have assistant management that will enforce these policies regarding beer permits?
Could you repeat the question, please? You broke up.
Are, are you the manager, or do you have people employed that will be managing and being responsible for this policy?
I'm the owner, and, uh, I'm there 80% of the time, and if I'm not there, there will be a person of age that has been trained to handle everything.
Okay, so you yourself will be managing and protecting upon this policy?
Yes, sir.
Other questions?
I'd like Mr. Bradley to speak on part of the findings on a permit, because, because y'all noticed there is something in the permit, and I'd like to hear him speak to how that is acceptable versus a more serious offense that might not be acceptable. Did you hear me, John?
I have no idea what you said. You're just real muddled. You're going to have to get by, you're going to have to get by a microphone somewhere.
I've got one.
Yeah, it's not connected to the Zoom, unfortunately, but try it again.
Uh, can you speak to the findings that are on the, uh, background check? Why that?
I haven't seen, I haven't seen the background check. I know what you asked me about, and typically I haven't seen your ordinance on beer permits, but typically misdemeanor convictions would not disable or disqualify someone from getting a beer permit. It's my understanding that there is a misdemeanor conviction on this record, but it does not have anything to do with the violation of the laws concerning the sale of beer, so I'm not sure what the connection would be with this. The law looks at it just like a speeding ticket as far as being a misdemeanor.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I got a ticket, um, a headlight. I was in a headlight violation, and, uh, I had paid my ticket on time at Robertson County, and they had never, uh, they never processed the payment like they should have, so therefore it looked like I didn't pay the ticket. So they, um, suspended my license, and then I, I got pulled over for another headlight ticket. And, uh, I, you know, so obviously suspended license, and then I had to go through Nashville and do all their process, so it shouldn't even be on my, on my, on my record.
Okay.
That happens frequently, Mr. Smalling, with people that get tickets in small towns, often there would be some mix-up about whether it's paid or not, and the town would just notify the state to suspend their license. And they don't always follow all the procedures of due process when they do that, I might add. So I, I understand this, but it's, you know, it, it, it's not an offense that disqualifies anyone from having a beer permit and Westmoreland, I'm certain of that. Okay, I'm, I just wanted to clarify.
Well, that's what I wanted the attorney to speak on, man, because we had something in the future that could be, uh, more, worse offense.
Okay, anything else? Ms. Keesha, you'll call for a roll.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Head?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Let the record show that the motion carries unanimously. The next item is basically a discussion item. Uh, it's brought over from the previous council about charter amendments. I know that, uh, the vice mayor has been in touch with, uh, Mr. Bradley about these. Uh, and John, I didn't know if we could just present the resolution from last year or what kind of updates you needed to do that to present it, but we need to get some movement on that so that we can present it to our legislative body by next month, our, our next meeting.
Yeah, I've spent several hours on this. What I was going to suggest is that you dedicate a study session to nothing but this, because this is going to take an hour or so, and I want everyone to have a shot at anything they think needs to be changed. The whole charter is wide open. We had this discussion last year. There's no reason to go back through it, but we need to re-adopt our charter, so this is a perfect time to change things like references to the Marshall and things like that that we don't have in Westmoreland. And so I've made a lot of those changes, and, uh, what I propose is that you, maybe at your next study session, you just set aside some time to do that, because it's, like I say, I like to go through anything of substance with the council so you know what you're changing. So that, that would be my suggestion, and, and before that meeting, uh, if you can send out the current version of the charter, where anybody can get it its own line, the, the current version, and that's what we're starting with. And what happened was, there was a, an amendment made in 2009 that somehow wasn't approved by the state and caused a lot of different things to happen, but the bottom line is we need to adopt the charter again. In my research just by the way, it's interesting, this issue of the city and town came up. Westmoreland changed from being a town to a city in 2010. So we've been that way 11 years, and I, and apparently none of our other vendors have had trouble paying us. That's, that's interesting. Uh, we do need to get that changed to city, I suppose. But that would be my suggestion with respect to the charter, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I, I was just going to, just going to let everyone know if they wanted to pull a copy for reference, uh, our last change, which, uh, came the 20th day of February 2020. It tells all the articles that, uh, and sections and what we were looking to change. That was Resolution 022020-4. It's February 2020, number four. Uh, anyone that wants to, uh, pick up a copy of that from, from City Hall, they would have it all laid out as to what changes, but, uh, what you're saying now, if I understand it, the entire charter is wide open.
Yes, and what I would suggest, we want to put those changes from 2020 in, because the council already voted to do that by unanimous vote, and because of the problem from 2009 that wasn't done by the legislature, I suggest that you just send that resolution from 2020 to the members of the board. Go ahead and if Keesha can send that out tomorrow, the next day, people can see what we agreed to do last year and then compare it to the charter that's online, and, uh, then maybe at the study session, we can, can devote some time to that, or if there's another time that you would prefer, Mayor. You know, if we, if we do it by Zoom, we've got a little more flex, flexibility in the time. That, that's up to you for the special meeting.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be a special meeting, it could just be a study session. We don't have to vote on it. We could put it on the February voting agenda. That's plenty of time to get it to William and Farrell. Um, you know, it's still in February, and they're having a special session on education at some point coming up, so that would be my suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
With that being said, I'm going to make a motion to.
You, you froze up, David.
Okay, with that, with that being said, I'm going to make a motion to table this to a work study, next work, work study.
Okay, we have a motion to table this very second.
I would like to second that.
Keesha, if you'll call for a roll, please.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Head?
Yes.
Charter amendments have been tabled to the work study. The next item on the agenda is the Planning and Zoning Board of Appointments. Uh, as the mayor's appointment, I would like to appoint Alex Jones to, uh, fill in the vacant spot that, uh, we're going to be having. Uh, Brian Smalling has to come off of the Planning and Zoning Board now that he has become a city council member. Uh, Doug Brown is currently the representative from the, the city council. If you would like to change that, now is the time to do it. If you want to put someone else in that position, now is the time to do it for the 2021 term, or actually to the 22 term.
I would like to stay on as the council representative, if possible.
Councilman Smalling has indicated that he would like to stay on as the coun, as a council representative if the council sees fit. Go ahead, Ms. Brown.
Mr. Mayor, I would, I would also, um, echo that. Uh, Mr. Smalling and I have talks, uh, and I, I do believe that he is, uh, because of his prior service on that board, would, uh, do just as good, uh, due diligence as I have, and I would like to, uh, remove myself from that, uh, board and allow Mr. Smalling to take my place.
With that being said, I would make a motion to appoint, uh, Brian Smalling to the Planning and Zoning Board.
Ms. Keesha, if you'll call for a roll, please.
Head?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Councilman Smalling will be the council representative for Planning and Zoning Commission, and once again, I would like to thank Mr. Alex Jones for stepping up and accepting the other vacancy that we had, and, uh, I appreciate that. The last item on our agenda tonight is to advertise for CO bids for the sludge plant press electrical installation at the wastewater treatment plant. Um, what we've had happen is, uh, we've discussed this at a couple of work studies. Um, we have lost our, um, area, or one of our two areas to dispose of sludge. So the next practical item is to, uh, put in the electrical and contract with a firm to come in and, and bring their press and press it out and just dispose of it in that manner, but the cost will, will have to be done by CO bid, so we will have to advertise it. So I'm looking for a motion for the authorization to advertise.
I'll make the motion to advertise.
I'll second it.
Have a motion by Councilman Smalling, second by Councilman Lee, to authorize the advertisement of CO bids for the sludge press electrical installation. It is very in discussion.
Do we have any idea, ballpark figure, and where that money might come from out of that budget?
It'll have to come out of the wastewater treatment plant fund.
And, and, no, they're mini line.
Probably have to come out of, uh, either reserve or it could, could go to, I mean, we, we have to be able to dispose of the sludge, so, uh, if we can't find, uh, someone who will let us use their, their farm to, to spread fertilizer, then, uh, we have to do it this way. Councilman Lee, you never did come up with any, uh, alternatives for us, did you? Anyone willing to step up?
No, sir, I haven't. It's just, it takes so much, uh, I mean, they, so much to go through to get approved. I mean, the area has to be just perfect for that to be approved, and I haven't found nobody willing to, to do that. I'd love to have it on my farm, but mine wouldn't qualify either.
Okay, Ms. Keesha, if you will call for a roll, please.
Brown?
Yes.
Head?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Lee? Lee.
Yes.
Smalling.
Yes.
Let the record reflect that the motion carries unanimously. That is everything that is on the agenda. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
I hear a second.
Second.
All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we stand adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.
Good night, everybody.